Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council meeting of Monday, August 25, 2014. We'll call this meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be led by Council Randall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item of business is citizens' comments. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments this evening?
Yes, do, Mr. Councilor.
Senator Mitchell, name an address for the record, please.
I'm Mike Mitchell, 1916 Gateway Drive, Lewiston. I'm here to ask for your support on an item that's on the budget for $100,000 for community park. It's becoming by far the most popular new park activity in the community. Activities are increased in the use of the park. I hope you'll give it favorable consideration when you review your budget requests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Chris Cosby. Am I loud enough? Can you hear it? All right. I'm Chris Cosby, 3032 Cypress Street. And I've come here to talk to you tonight about something that's kind of heavy on my heart. The city of Lewiston is now considering an ordinance number 4614, which I'll only read half of the first paragraph, prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations based on familiar status, sexual orientation, and/or gender identity and expression. When I read this document, it was, it impacts our whole community. It's not just about jobs and housing. You read the document, and it's more than that. Councilman Blakey talked to a pastor today and said, "Oh, no, it's just about housing and jobs. That's all. And if your church doesn't comply, then too bad for you." He then talked to the city attorney, who said, "No, that's not true. In 38-5, churches have an exemption." So who's right here? But I can tell you this, because of the deviancy of this community, they are going after your churches. There is no question about it. And even if they're wrong, it's still going to cost you money, and it's going to cost you time and resources you could use towards your ministries. So how about, how about business owners? Don't they have any protection or any rights of their own to refuse supporting any kind of sexual deviancy if I sell cupcakes? And I don't want to support your homosexual celebration? And I say, "No, I'm not going to sell to you because of what I understand is right in God's word," then I'm wrong. And Mr. Orr up here, he's going to put handcuffs on me, and he's going to take me to jail. And the city attorney over there is going to prosecute me and put me in jail for, fine me $1,000 and put me in jail for six months. I don't understand why the fine is so low. A Christian family back east would just find $13,000 for the same thing. So tell me something, Mr. Maldonado, do you want to see me go to jail because I refuse sexual deviancy? Yes or no? That's all.
Sir, could you please summarize? We have a lot of people that want to testify.
Okay. How about the rest of you? Let's take it as a group. Who wants to see me go to jail because of that?
We'll be having a public hearing in the next few weeks.
All right, we will. We will, and I hope to bring a few more folks.
Thank you.
So what I'm saying is this, we're all at risk here. If you have a small business, and I encourage pastors to activate their churches, to let the city council know their displeasure. The emails and addresses are on the council website. Business people, if you don't want this deviancy stuck down your throat, activate your employees and bring this to a halt. We've got to let these people know, who won't stand for common decency, that this is wrong. It's wrong before God. It's wrong before our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Colleen Mahoney, 123 15th Avenue. Have lived there for 44 years. Last, this July, same house. And I'm here on a happy note. I want to talk to you about the library. The library has changed the complexion of our fair city. Three years ago, we had a disaster area downtown. It, it was abandoned. It was, the weeds were coming up. Now we have this gorgeous, gorgeous facility, which is state-of-the-art and which has become not just a Lewiston treasure, but a state treasure. We have, I have met people who have come to see the library on their way through town, from Boise, Seattle, Tri-Cities. Saw a lady the other day from Chicago. I don't know how she found us, but she did. And they were all admiring the library. And the, I took the person who was in charge of architecture for seniors at the University of Idaho to see our library. She immediately started taking pictures and arranged to have her students, five of her students, come to, to tour the library. I would also like to say that the Idaho Library Association is meeting here October 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. They're, we are bringing in librarians from all over the state are coming. They are going to be staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, and they're also going to be shopping in our stores. We recommend, we, the budget that we looked at for how much they will spend will be about $30,000 in, in our fair city. And if any of you are interested in going to any of the programs, you can access the information online, by phone, or dropping in. And I would like you to know that the editor of Mad Magazine from back east is going to be the speaking at a breakfast meeting. And, and he is not paying his own way. Most of what we are spending has come from grants. Heather Stout wrote a grant to bring this gentleman in from the East Coast to speak about censorship, which I think would be really worthwhile. And then I wanted one to say, since this is the budget centered. When I was a little girl, 80, 100 years ago, my father and mother were discussing taxes, and my dad said, was complaining. And I said, "Well, why do you pay, if you hate taxes so much," I was about eight, "why do you pay them?" And he said, "Do you see the canal running out?" I grew up on a farm. "The canal that's watering our, our potatoes and our wheat?" Yeah. "You see the electricity that we turn on?" That's the rural electrification. The first, the water was from the Milner Dam. And he talked about defense. He talked about police. He talked about fire. And he said, "Basically, we pay taxes for civilization." And every time I write a check for the, to the city, or to the state, or to the U.S. Treasury, I think this is for civilization, which we all enjoy." Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Lorenz, 458 Crestline Circle Drive. I guess I got a question for Dan Marsh. When, when city staff goes to meetings, do we pay you mileage on that? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, no, that's not correct. If there's attendance out of town, that's
Yeah, it'd be an out-of-town meeting.
Like a training session, maybe, in Boise, Spokane, then yes.
Okay, so you are paid mileage on out-of-town meetings?
For out-of-town, yes.
Okay. So that's, so I guess that's, really has nothing to do then with this car allowance, is that right? What I'm saying is, if we're paying you to go to meetings anyway, then I guess, I guess this car allowance of $200 a month we pay you guys is, basically, we're paying you to drive to work. I mean, I mean, this is something you can get rid of. I mean, it's not like, you know, it's, you know, that's one start. And, you know, you need to think about this stuff. Because if we're paying them mileage to go to meetings, then we certainly don't need to be paying them to drive to work. And then, secondly, I just soon see you take some of that money that you're putting in the library remodel and transfer, I know you can't really transfer, but you could definitely allocate that for the, you know, Warner Park, at least update that. From what I understand, they said, the library board's got quite a bit of money set aside. So why not use their money to rebuild this, do the remodel upstairs, since this thing's really never passed, you know, voter approval anyway? And it, you know, it's a nice building, and, you know, I get a lot of books out of there. But I'd rather see the money allocated for that go to that community park versus the library. And then, I guess, I guess the last thing, I mean, like I said, once again, it's, you know, it's property tax. It's just not this dollar on residential stuff. It's, you know, it affects businesses, you know, rental property, houses, rental houses. They don't get any break, you know? I don't know. You know, I find it hard to believe, I don't know, maybe Mr. Maldonado pays a whole bunch of property tax I don't know about, but I don't know how you can sit there and vote for this budget if you do not pay property tax and you incur a burden on, you know, people that are not, you know, that have a hard time making a living, or retired or whatever else. You know, it's just not right. And shake your head at me, Mr. Mayor, but the truth is, you know, it'd be like taxation without representation. And the last bit, as far as this cellphone usage, there's nothing wrong with this stipend. I don't think all 139 employees that are on that list need a cellphone. I don't think people mowing the grass or anything else. You know, I think there's some instances probably where the police and fire do need that. But, you know, and probably the personal usage on those cellphones probably runs 90, 95 percent. And why should we be, you know, paying a cellphone for their private use? Thank you. Thank you. Have any other citizen comments this evening? Okay, seeing no takers, we'll move on to public hearings and presentations. First item up is a public hearing, ZCO 4-14. Applicants Kumar in AAA Washington. It's a request to rezone the easterly 50 feet of 2116 12th Avenue from low-density residential R2 to regional commercial C6. Senator Bennett, you want to introduce this, or turn it to Joel, or?
Yeah, Mr. Plaskin is here from Community Development to review both of the item A and item B.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to put some maps up on the overhead projector here. This is an aerial photograph of the property in question. North is up on this map. See if I can get a better, better view. This is 21st Street. This is 12th Avenue. And the property in question is right here. You can see right here that there's a building built on the property right now. And the piece of property you're being asked to rezone is the easterly 50 feet, which is located right here. It's hard to see under this tree cover, but part of the building that's built there also is on this part of property that you're being asked to rezone. It is a commercial building, but it happens to be located, for some reason, in R2 low-density residential zone. So the applicants requested to rezone it to commercial to make the zoning consistent with the use of the property. This is a copy of the zoning map for the area. Again, north is up. This is 21st Street. This is 12th Avenue. You can see the westerly portion of the building is in the C6 zone, and then the easterly 50 feet is in the R2 zone. This is a copy of the city's comprehensive plan map for this neighborhood. Again, north is up. 21st Street happens to be on the edge of this map right here. It's very difficult to read, but this is 12th Avenue. The property in question is located right here. This color or shade that you're seeing on this map is, according to the legend, commercial. So the long-range plan for the city designates the property for commercial use, which is important consideration in looking at a rezone application. I'll also point out that the property is on 12th Avenue, which is a dedicated, or I'm sorry, a designated collector street. And it's only 120 feet or so away from 21st Street, which is a minor arterial street. So it's generally desirable to have properties on collector and particularly marked arterial streets or close to arterial streets in commercial zoning districts. This is a photograph of the property in question. This is actually, this is looking south on 12th Avenue. This is the building that's on the property. The part that you're being asked to rezone is this, this piece over here on the left side of this photo. This is a photo of, taken from on the property itself, looking across part of the property to the west toward 21st Street, where there's a commercial property already to the west as well. This is taken from on the property, looking east. This is a photo showing the boundary line of the subject property. This hedgerow is the boundary line of the property in question. The part you're asked to rezone is this piece right here. This is the adjoining property, which is used for residential right now, but you're going to be holding a public hearing right after this one to also rezone this to commercial. This is a photo of the commercial use across the street from the subject property. So to sum it up, the property is already used for commercial purposes. It has been historically, and the applicant's requesting a rezone from R2 to C6 to make the zoning of the property consistent with the use and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Be happy to ask or answer any questions you might have now and/or later.
Any questions for Mr. Plaskin? Thanks, Joel. Stay close. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing. This time, I'll ask if there's anybody wishing to speak in favor of the rezone or against. Please come down, state your name, address for the record.
My name is Jerry Bratnov, and I'm a, my client is Ajas Kumar, and I'm representing him on this. Basically, it's a commercial property already, and I'm just here to answer any questions. It just seems like it's an administrative thing that got overlooked when it was originally done. So we plan to remodel the building for a medical office and parking, and along with the normal street improvements and that are required for ordinary development in the city of Lewiston, so.
Okay. And without the zone change, it would be hard to get a permit, I'm assuming?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bratnov? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or opposed?
My name is Linda Joyner Jones. I live at 3775 Nicholas Drive, and Dr. Kumar is my client. The building has been vacant. The commercial building, number A, has been vacant for a while. And anytime we can fill up something that's already in the infrastructure in the city, it's a good idea, I feel, rather than leaving it vacant. And then number B is the house that he's buying to go along with this so that he can increase the parking. And that, that house and that lot was getting quite overgrown with weeds and grass that had not been watered. And I think with him having both A and B together, he's going to greatly improve that street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Dick White. Business address is 1015 F Street, Lewiston. I represent the owner of the property, which is AAA Washington. And when you get the tax sheets from the assessor's office, they always have zoning on there, and you get, there were three different tax tracks on this. I saw C6, C6, and I missed the R2, or we'd been here a lot sooner. Anyway, I apologize for that. I'd like to say it's the first mistake I've made this year, but that's not true. So anyway, I appreciate your consideration. It's just obvious that it was a screw-up somewhere along the way. Anyway, and if you guys could suspend the rules and do three readings tonight, that'd be cool, too. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Mr. Plaskin, do you have any other comments?
I just want to note that the Planning and Zoning Commission made a unanimous recommendation that you approve the rezone application. And also note to you that decisions on rezones are to be based on criteria and standards relevant to the application. And you do have a worksheet in your packets that lists criteria and standards. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joel? Thanks, Joel. To close the public hearing, I don't see that we're going to be having a vote on this tonight or three readings.
That's correct. You need to begin. Mayor members and council articulate your reasoning for the zone change, and then we will prepare a reasoned statement based upon what your reasoning is.
For maybe the 8th of September?
Hopefully, yeah.
Or the, okay.
Thereabouts, yeah.
Thank you. So we need a motion to make the reasoned statement?
No, you need a motion either to approve or deny the application.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve zone change 14, or 04-14? Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Next up, public hearing, ZCO 5-14.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, can I have at least some reasoning behind, if you have something either from the planning and zoning statement, or if you can give me some reasoning that will help me to write my statement?
As of right now, I agree with the planning and zoning's decision in their minutes.
Mr. Randall, did you have something based on your motion?
I'm the same. I agree with what has been designated by the planning and zoning, and also the explanation that we've got commercial properties adjacent to.
Thank you.
And it meets the comprehensive plan.
And it currently is a commercial building, so. Okay, so we need to vote on that?
No, that's fine. I just need some reasoning behind the vote.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up would be ZCO 5-14. The applicant is Kumar. A request to rezone 2124 12th Avenue from low-density residential R2 to regional commercial C6. Mr. Plaskin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go through the same procedure here as I did on the last one. This is an aerial photograph of the property in question. North is up on the map. This is 21st Street, 12th Avenue. This is the property that's the subject of this rezone application. It's right immediately adjacent on the east side of the property you just agreed to rezone, which was right here. So this piece of property is right next to it. It's got a house on it right now with a detached garage in the southeast corner. This is a copy of the zoning map. Again, you can see that it's zoned R2 low-density single-family residential. It's got C6 zoning to the north, C6 zoning to the west, and C6 zoning to the south. So you're being asked to infill the C6 zone and capture this property within the C6 zone. Copy the comprehensive plan map. North is up, 21st Street, 12th Avenue. Shows the subject property right here. The legend of the comprehensive plan map shows that that property is designated on the long-range plan for commercial use. Again, the property is on a collector's street in close proximity to a minor arterial street, desirable locations typically for commercial property. This is a photograph of the property in question. This is the front of the house that you're being asked to rezone to C6. This is the backyard of the property. You can see an existing commercial building behind it. This is just the back of the house. This is the detached garage that I mentioned that's on the property right now. This is the existing commercial building behind the fence here on the property that you just agreed to rezone to C6 as well. This is a picture looking at the east property line of the property in question. This is the house that's on the property or being asked to rezone. Just as you can see, an elevation difference between the property or being asked to rezone here and the adjoining residential property to the east. This is a picture of the commercial use that's across the street from the subject property. And hopefully, that gets you a little familiar with the lay of the land and the circumstances. Again, it's an infill of commercial surrounded by commercial to the north, south, and west, and designated for commercial use on the comprehensive plan map. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Randall.
Joel, is that, is the application for a parking lot?
The application? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is the application for a parking lot, and is, if it is, is the parking lot going to have street lighting within the parking lot area that will be on at night?
As with most rezone applications, there is no development proposal with the application.
Okay.
Rezones are to be considered, not necessarily specific to any development proposal. It's to decide whether or not the property is appropriate for the use of the zone that's being proposed, which in this case is C6 regional, regional commercial. You could presume that any, any of the listed uses in the C6 zone You could presume that any of the listed uses in the C6 zone, which is contained in your staff report in your packet, could potentially be put on the property. This particular property owner has, I guess, an idea of maybe what he wants to do with it, but we have no development proposal at this time. It's not required to be submitted with the rezone application and maybe the applicant ought to best answer that himself.
Thank you.
Councilor Daniel?
Maybe a clerical question. On the application for zone change, it says the property owner is Alan and Millie Nelson. And on the staff report, it says it's Mr. Kumar.
Yeah, and again, I might defer to let the applicant or representative of the applicant answer the question. There have been different property ownership involved with these applications and it's in the process of changing hands.
Other questions? Councilor Blakey?
I think my question is along the line of JED, so maybe it's not appropriate. I'll ask anyway and you tell me. If improvements are done on the property, would that include down the road? If there are improvements on the property, that would include curb and gutter and improving in that situation if gutters don't exist already?
It would depend on the specific circumstances of what was proposed. Those requirements actually come out of our Public Works Department and so I'm not the best person to answer the question. For one thing, for another thing, we don't have a development proposal, so I just don't know at this point.
All right, fair enough.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, Joel. Is the applicant here tonight? You want to come up and say a few words, maybe? One of your representatives, yourself? It's up to you, sir.
Linda Joyner Jones again. Do you need my address and everything again?
I think we have it.
Okay. I'm representing Dr. Kumar and I'm not... He will tell you exactly what his plans are, but it will be to increase the size of the parking lot. It has already changed hands. He has purchased the property. So, it was in Millie and her husband's name when we started. It now belongs to Dr. Kumar. And I forgot to ask before for A and B, we would like to know if it would be possible to get an answer for the... On the first reading. Dr. Kumar has a very specific type of clinic that he's building and he would very much like to get this started as soon as possible for the patient's sake. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Thank you, ma'am. Okay, oh, Mr. Bratnov?
Again, Jerry Bratnov and my business is 724 and 1/2 Sixth Street, Clarkson, Washington, and I'm an architect. There's a couple of questions regarding development on the property. We've looked at having some parking on this as well as expansion of the building on this particular lot. We would be looking at developing curbs and gutters, stormwater, retention, the whole nine yards. Also, we'd be looking at, I think, because there's adjacent residences, will there be a buffer required for any buildings? Is that right?
15-foot building setback and either side-up scaring fence and/or landscaping.
And I think any lighting that we've done would be handled sensitively, so anyway. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Questions? Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor? Other requests or opposed? Okay, well, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Is there any follow-up? Mr. Plaskin, do you have anything else to add or... Counselors? I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve ZCO 5-14. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Do we need to do the reason? Okay. And do you have a particular reason why you made the motion, counselor?
Based on the planning and zoning's decision for the zone change.
Ever to agree with that? Okay. Okay, then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, the third public hearing. This is the McSorley Addition Administrative Plat. The applicant is more quality design. It is a four-lot subdivision of property located in the 1400 block of 23rd Avenue south of McSorley Elementary School.
Mr. Kay Hirsch, you're serving departmental duty here making the presentation.
Okay.
Mayor, council, it's, as always, good to be here tonight. I'll make this as brief as possible. If you notice in your packets, you will also see for the subdivision, a listing of relevant criterion standards for granting or denial of this subdivision request. So, this is a new thing. Due to some state code changes and so forth, you're not going to see plats come through anymore on the consent agenda as much. Administrative plats like this one will come to council and will have a public hearing. So, you'll be asked to make a decision based on these relevant criterion standards and so I'm trying to make Jamie's job just a little bit easier here. So, keep these in mind as I give the presentation. As you said, this is more quality design. The location of this proposed subdivision is on the north side of 23rd Avenue between 1409 and 1513 23rd Avenue. To give you an idea, I'll put some maps up here. The addition... The piece of property that's being divided is right here. Nice rectangular piece of property. 23rd Avenue across here, 14th Street over here. This is the McSorley Elementary Playground in here, residential, all the way around residential uses. This is an eight-unit multifamily housing in here. And then as you go further this way, you get over into the regents' properties. The plat itself is proposed to be four long, north-south, narrow lots. This is what exists on the property now. Mr. Young decided that when he bought the property, he wanted to go ahead and build on the property before the subdivision was done, which is allowed because it was a single half-acre lot. And what he built, a duplex on the lot, with the idea that when the plat goes through, this duplex will be divided right between the garages there. So, it'll actually become what I call townhouses, typical townhouses. So, that's... That was the proposal. That's what's there now. Now, the other side of the property, there's a wood fence over here that you can see. That's the west side of the property. We're looking north in this photo. Another photo, I'm standing in 14th... I'm standing in 23rd Avenue, excuse me, looking toward the east at that same duplex that we were just looking at in the last photo. You can see the undeveloped portion over here of his lot, of his parcel. There'll be two lots in this undeveloped area. The subject parcel is part of the Fairview Terrace planned unit development. And now that planned use... Or planned unit development had different areas within it. This area is... Was an area that was recommended for higher-density residential. Excuse me, just a minute. Getting out of my way here. Now, the duplex will become the two townhouses with common wall and separate lots when the plat is final. The other two lots may developed in... May be developed in the same way or with two separate, single-family dwellings. You could put separate, small, single-family dwellings on those lots if you wanted to, but they would be tight. The surrounding land uses are residential to the west and south like we saw. Public school playground to the north and multifamily apartments on the immediate east side. The comprehensive plan shows this area as being in the northeast corner of the comprehensive plan's Normal Hill neighborhood. The desired futures for this neighborhood include the infilling of existing neighborhoods and completion of frontage improvements along the existing streets, consisting of curb, gutter, sidewalk to enhance the pedestrian's safety. This particular area shown on the comprehensive plan's future use map is being suitable for higher-density residential development. As it stands, these small four lots are a good transition from single-family residential lots into the multifamily that you have right next door on the east. So, as far as analysis goes, the four-lot plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan's goal of infill, development, and completion of the frontage improvements for pedestrian's safety. Mr. Young did go ahead and complete the sidewalk that was there. The curb and gutter was already existing, so there now is sidewalk all the way along. The residential recommendation there fits in with most of the existing type of the surrounding ground or land. It does comply with the requirements of the Fairview Terrace planned unit development and the applicable zoning and subdivision codes. The proposed plat has been approved by the fire department, the city planner, the Public Works Department, the Idaho North Central District of Public Health, and the various franchise utility companies that will serve the lots have approved their creation. Staff did receive two comments from people that live in the area. One was from a gentleman that lives about two streets over. He was just concerned with, it seemed like putting four lots on a half-acre was an awful lot to him. That was his only comment. The other comment was a letter that you received, or that we received this morning, actually, at City Hall. And you've received that, I believe, today. So, you can read that letter for yourself. The gentleman that wrote that lives right across the street from the development. So, at this point, I would ask if you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Councilor Blakey?
A couple of them, please. So, I am reading the... I am reading the letter from Mr. Thompson and he asks the question, and I think you answered it, but I'm sure clear in my own mind, that what could be built on those two other lots, if I'm facing the duplex and to the left, what could be built... Could be two single families... Two single-family homes put on the two lots, or another duplex could still go in there, correct?
That is my understanding. If there's any other options, I would defer to Mr. Plaskon.
No duplex could be built on the property or anything like that?
Those lots are small enough to where you're very restricted.
All right. My second question is, and I don't quite understand, there's a current duplex there right now. And you explained that the property line would go right down the garage between the two buildings. I could be wrong, but if it's a duplex, it's in a rental situation now. It's a rental. If it's made into a townhouse, would those folks be forced to have to buy the property? Would they be forced out? Or more importantly, what happens? What happens in the mechanics of owning a townhouse? Once you own a common wall, you now share the expense... You would have to form an association and all the common expenses that go with the townhouse. What would happen in there?
I know that the developer intended townhouses right from the very start before he built the duplex. But I really can't speak to him on all those other issues. I don't know if the people that are in the units now are renting. I don't know if they plan to buy. Those are questions that the developer, Mr. Young, would have to answer. I don't believe he's here tonight.
I guess I'm gonna follow up.
Can I explain why the duplex was built in the first place or why he was allowed to? To go ahead?
Please.
Before... Piece of ground is subdivided like this. It's just a single parcel. And we allow... We normally allow a building to go on, on that piece of parcel, or on that piece of ground as a single parcel. In this case, you know, Mr. Young bought this parcel, half-acre. He was allowed to put anything that that half hour... Or that half acre would have allowed him to put there, as long as he met with the with the conditions, you know, of the city and the Fairview Terrace planning and development. He could have put anything there. What he chose to do was to subdivide. And in the meantime, he wanted to go ahead and build there. And so, he built what he called a duplex, which is allowed on that parcel. But he built it in such a way so that he knew that that common lot line would go right through that common wall of the duplex. But I know right from the start, he intended to divide these lots. This is a fairly common thing that happens, not so much with duplexes, but with other subdivisions. They will build a single house in the subdivision area, then finalize their plat, and then build on the other lots after they're actually created.
We have a situation like that over by Sunset Park where the... I'm trying to remember the name of the project, 29th and 11th, I think. But those lots were designed with a common wall, zero property line, as they call it. That was the whole concept. There was small houses with a common property line, common wall. Any other questions? Councilor Randall?
Probably more, Mr. Plaskin. On the common wall, when you go from a duplex to a townhouse, is there different requirements for the common wall?
Yes. These kinds of questions that we're fielding right now aren't necessarily directly applicable to the provisions of the subdivision code and the subdivision application that you're looking at, but yes, there are different... And I'm not, again, the best person to talk to about that because that's a building code requirement. Because this developer knew that he wanted to put a property line down this common wall between the two units, he met with the building official, my understanding is, and built that wall already so that it will comply with the building code requirement for a property line being there. It will... It has a higher fire separation requirement.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, at this point, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak in favor or opposed?
I have questions. Do I go up there and ask?
Yes, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Dudgeon and I'm adjacent to the property we're talking about and my... Just to the west, and mine is the fence that runs along with that. And I guess some of the perception the neighbors had to weigh the notice read on the lot was you were going to put in four more units in addition to the two that were already there. But it looks like there's just another duplex townhouse going there. It'll be a total of four units. Is that correct? Okay. I think that had to be cleared up because that was a little... That's how that reads, looks like that. My next question is, have they done any type of traffic feasibility study on how much traffic's on that street on 23rd? My question is, and I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but where I sit on the corner there of 14th and 23rd, I can see mornings when schoolchildren walk because you have regents at one end of the block. And then you have the apartments, whatever those are, down towards the regents, there's a high density of traffic during certain times of the day while kids are trying to go to school. And I just don't know what provisions are going to be made in place to, you know... I think there needs to be some type of... Some type of... Something looked at for the feasibility of the crosswalk there to make that safer if this goes in. I'm not saying I'm opposed for this or in favor of it, but that needs to be... We need to realize that because there's a lot of... to realize that because there's a lot of, a lot of younger schoolkids that walk across that intersection there at 14th and 23rd. The other thing that I had in question is when I moved into that property about two years ago, I sold my house up on Mayfair Ridge and moved and bought my part of the townhouse that I'm in now. And there was a, a problem with drug transactions down at the other end at 23rd by Regent's at night, because I used to walk down there, and I actually walked on those, and I think that's been cleared up. But I just want to make sure that, you know, where we have the, if there's additional families in that area with children, whatever we got that, that we have required, you know, the police protection and, and things going by there. And those are the, some of the concerns I have, so. Thank you.
My name's Mike Benson, 1419 23rd Avenue, which is one of the duplexes in question, or the currently existing duplexes. And I, I just wanted to clarify, we are renting there. Both sides are being rented. And tonight is the first notice I have of, of this townhouse situation and the property lined down the middle and whatever might come from that. I agree with my neighbor there, the wording of the sign that's posted on the empty space makes it sound like there were to be four additional lots, so it's good to have that clarification as well. I guess I too wanted to clarify, at one point, it sounded like the dividing line would restructure the duplex. If that's not the case, is that so? Just a figurative line. Thank you.
My name is Mike Duncan. I'm at 1525 15th Street, 2325 15th Street. Don't even know my own address. I live about two houses up from this, and my only concern is the amount of parking that they have. Right now, we've got two duplexes there, no cars in the garage. You saw the picture, you have a camper and a pickup sitting next to one of the duplexes, all right, in the empty lot. They're just already with the duplex. We have more cars than we have on our street on 20, on 15th Street. If you add two more duplexes in here, I think your parking is impossible. So I don't know how that works in all of this, but I wish you would take that into account.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? AC and none. We'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Mr. Hayhurst, could you step down, maybe address some of the concerns?
I will try to address some of those concerns. I guess, starting with the, with the gentleman that had the question about the traffic study or anything, you know, of that type. Normally, for a small administrative plat like this, this will add four units. We don't really consider traffic as being issue in these, have never really considered those for administrative plats. When you get into the larger subdivisions, of course, we look at that. We require traffic studies and so forth, but we have not on subdivisions as small The, the issue with the parking, I know that Mr. Young, as you saw, as you saw in the photo, let me put that back up again. Whoops. There we go. Always do that. He does, he is providing a garage on each side with a driveway that goes in. The driveway is a, is a regular, you know, length driveway, so you can park one vehicle in each one of the driveway spaces, plus one in the, in the garage, I assume, unless you use it for storage or whatever, as a lot of us do. And then the street is, does have curb and gutter there all the way along. I can't really speak to how crowded that would become there as far as parking. My few times past the units that are there now, I have seen, I believe, one time, two cars parked in front of those units, and that's all I've seen. So, but I don't live there, obviously, so I don't, I don't see it as often as residents do there, so.
And RV storage is not allowed on the street, so it would have to be side yard or be in the rear yard.
Yeah, you can see in the photo again, if you'll turn that back on, you can see the truck and the, and the camper that they're talking about there. It's being stored on the side right now, just in the yard.
Excuse me, sir? Would I be able to respond to that?
Well, we've, no, we've, we've closed the public hearing, sir. Okay?
Is there anything else you'd like me to respond to?
Well, separation in that particular zone, even though it's a, we're potentially approving a, a new plat, there's still separation required between the structures, side yard. Joel, do you have that answer?
Under the zero lot line provisions of the city code, which apply to this particular application, there is only a five-foot side yard requirement.
So zero on one side and five feet on the other?
Let me confirm it. Five feet on the opposite side?
So essentially, be 10 feet between the two structures if another?
Correct.
Like building were constructed?
Correct.
Any other questions? Counselor Blakey.
I am friends with Mr. Benson, and I have been over to the property that's up for discussion. And in the letter that was sent by Mr. Thompson, he talks about the landscaping, which obviously is not really an issue that is up for us to discuss. But it is interesting. It is fairly low level of landscaping in the front of the building. In fact, the one, a couple of times I've been over there, there is a driveway, and to the right of the, one of the condominium, one to the apartment duplexes, it's totally gravel, and it looks like there's an additional parking there in the front, and the same is true to the one on the left. It looks like there's additional parking off, off of the driveway. And I could conceivably see where some of the residents would be upset if what you and I perceive as front lawn, but is gravled and becomes just an extra parking lot in front of those buildings. From a city code standpoint, I don't think there's anything we can do about that, but it's an observation.
No, that's correct. I mean, if you choose to turn your front yard into gravel, that is, you're right. So. Counselor Daniel.
I make a comment. I, I know we, we got the staff report, and we opened up the hearing, we gave citizens an opportunity to speak, but then we got more staff information, and there's a citizen that, there's a citizen that wants to make a comment. I would kind of like to give him the opportunity to speak. This is one and only opportunity to speak to this. That's my understanding. This is the only hearing.
Sir, would you like to come down?
With your permission.
Certainly.
Seems that we should be interested in gathering facts rather than sticking to the letter of law. The person who has firsthand facts, I would hope that you'd be happy to hear them. In fact, the driveway, there is a parking space directly in front of the garage, and adjoining it is another paved parking space. And then, the gravel space that Mr. Blakey referred to, so, in fact, attached to each of the two duplexes are three legitimate parking spaces. I'd only offer that.
To alleviate on-street parking.
Yeah, I only offer that. I, I don't really have, I just came out of interest tonight to see what was happening, and I'm glad I did. But I'm offering that because I think it's good that you have facts. I'm surprised some of the people involved didn't research that a little better, maybe.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have one more question. Is it, is it back open to public or?
Sure.
Okay. I just, I just want to get some clarification on this. So when we were talking...
So when we were just discussing about the gravel, were you talking about the front yard or the side yard when you were just speaking?
Me not being a landscaper, my idea of a front yard and your idea of a side yard may be different. I'm talking about a piece of property, what I perceive to be is in the front of the house.
Okay. My, my only concern in this would probably be better answered by the Fire Department. So if that, if you were, if we're talking about the side space, empty space easements were gravled and that was used as off-street parking, does there, has to be some access for a vehicle to get around behind the structures in case of fire? Or maybe they don't on that side of joint? That's, that's a question just brought to mind with me, if they do have off-street parking, and it's gravled, which would make it nice to park. On the other hand, is there some type of code? I mean, does it have to be a fire access to get something around it if there's stuff parked on each side of them or between them? Do you see that? That's my question. That's just another question I had that maybe we should discuss.
Chief, real quick. 300 feet from a hydrant, correct?
And it's residential, so we can access around the outside of it with those that doesn't have a setback off the roadway, so it meets all the required, so even though it's gravel, we can still get our hose around.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Daniel, do they have something?
Mr. Randall.
Counselor Collins.
Just a clarification. Mr. Blakey asked about whether, if it stayed like this, we'd be adding potentially two single-family dwellings, but it says on here, the other two lots may be developed in the same way or with two separate. So when I hear the same way, I hear another duplex that could be set up on a plot line and split. So conceivably, we could have four more families if it's split down the middle.
No. One more structure.
If that one's turned into a duplex, that's two, two spaces, correct?
Yeah, there's a duplex existing there now. What they could build was one additional duplex. That's all that they could build there if they decided to go duplex. Or it could be two single-family dwellings that would be fairly small houses. So total, you're going to have four families, four livable units on this subdivision.
Thank you. Further comments? Anybody else? Okay, I guess now we'll close the public hearing after reopening. Okay, I guess what, where we're at right now, Jamie, you're asking for us to approve the administrative plat? Do we need to fill in the blanks on this questionnaire?
It'd be nice if you filled in the blanks on the questionnaire, or, this is not something that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they're sending out forward findings to you. This is the only public hearing that will be held on it, so approve or deny, please give your reasoning behind it.
Like I said, entertain a motion to approve the McSorley addition administrative plat. So moved.
Second.
Maybe a motion or a second. Discussion.
I guess the...
Certainly.
The, the reason, I guess, would be based on the analysis section of the staff report presented to us by Mr. Hayhurst.
Is everybody okay with that? Is there anything anybody would like to add? I guess I can go along with that, and I think the way that property is lined out, to me, and having seen several developments that Mr. Young has done in town, I can only suspect that we'd be looking at another townhouse next to it. 5,500 square feet for a lot that's 40, 42 foot wide would necessarily require a very, very small footprint of a house, and I don't see that being very attractive for a home buyer, so I'll go along with what Counselor Daniels proposed. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We'll accept the motion to read the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the minutes of the June 23, 2014 regular meeting, August 4, 2014 work session, and the August 11, 2014 regular meeting. Accepting the minutes of the July 17, 2014 Historic Preservation Commission. Approving the Airport East Subdivision preliminary plat. The subdivision of a 1.85 acre parcel located on the south side of Cedar Avenue between homes addressed to 620 and 628 Cedar Avenue into five building lots in the low-density residential zone. Approving Resolution 2014-50 by title only. A resolution accepting and approving an agreement between the Snake River Vista LLC and Idaho Limited Liability Company, David Keel, an individual, and the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation. Accepting and approving the grant of certain easements and the vacation of certain easements and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable dated August 1, 2014 through August 14, 2014 in the amount of $1,928,182.34.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda's been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Consent agenda is read?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
Just wanted to bring up that we need to remind the Planning and Zoning and the inspection or the building people that there, the FAA has come up with new rules for properties adjacent to the airport, and so they may have to check into that before they okay anything else beyond the plat.
Okay, I know there were a couple of proposed projects when I was on the P&amp;Z, and we're, that was always brought to attention because of the flight line, things like that, potential impact.
I guess the FAA has got some new rules, so they need to check into that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, on to the active agenda. First item, Ordinance 4613, potential third reading and adoption. This is amending Ordinance 4600, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2013, ending September 30, 2014, appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the city in the sum of $7,357,180. I'll entertain a motion to read. Ordinance 4613.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of Ordinance 4613 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston, Idaho, amending Ordinance Number 4600, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014. Appropriating additional monies that are to be received by the City of Lewiston, Idaho in the sum of $7,357,180 and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, Ordinance 4613 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Ordinance 4613.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, item B, ordinance 4612. This is a potential third reading and adoption to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2014 and ending September 30, 2015. Mr. Bennett, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the third of the three readings of the ordinance for the annual budget. We have reviewed comments made during the first two meetings by members of the public and of course by the council members. You've received a number of communications from the staff on questions that you have raised regarding potential budget issues and also some potential solutions, if you will, to addressing issues that are associated with the property tax levy for the coming year. This would be the final reading and adoption of the ordinance, at which time the budget would be adopted and then the paperwork would be prepared on that basis and then submitted to Nespers County in accordance with state law for adoption of the budget. So we're certainly prepared to respond to any additional requests or suggestions from the public and/or council this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. I guess first off, need a motion to read ordinance 4612. I'd entertain a motion to read ordinance 4612 for the third time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? This is further reading. Okay, all those in...
I do have something to say. Discussion?
Certainly. Counselor Blakely.
As we delve into this and dive into this project tonight, and we're going to be talking about lots of items here as we move into this budget, we'll be talking about the small picture and we'll be talking about the big picture. We'll be talking about items that may seem insignificant to some and very significant to others. I just, I remind all of us, all of us here at this table and the taxpayers that I think it's important that we start to ask the ten of us... And when I say the ten of us, I'm talking about the seven of us plus the three county commissioners. We start talking, it's time, I think, we open up dialogue. And I understand that young, new councilmen probably say this every couple of years, and I'll say it again, that we need to start opening up dialogue and not be discussing how we're going to save 20,000 here or 10,000 there. I think we need to be asking the bigger questions and be asking, how can we save a half a million? Where can we find a million-dollar savings? What can we do as a city and county jointly? Where can we work together? Where may we share equipment from time to time if necessary instead of maybe at times duplicating purchases? I think it's time that we open up those dialogues and have that discussion. And maybe it's fruitless, be the first to admit, but maybe it's not. Maybe something will come out of this, because as we continue to ask taxpayers to pay more money, it's time, I believe, that we find some of what I call the large deductions. And where can we possibly, if we're duplicating a service, or where can we jointly provide a service and work together?
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments?
I just want to clarify, this is just to read, not to adopt.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of reading ordinance 4612 for the third time, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4612 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance. Appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the City of Lewiston, Idaho for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2014 and ending September 30, 2015. Providing for the filing of a copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State as required by law and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4612's been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4612.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Now for the discussion. Anybody like to start?
I would make a motion that we accept or we put on the table a budget of 3%, 3% increase, and a half percent, I believe, before going taxes, so the total amount would be three and a half percent.
Okay.
Can you need a second?
Discussion?
Do we have to move for that?
You're, no, that's what's being proposed, is the three and a half. Okay. Further discussion? Counselor Daniel.
Mr. Mayor, so my understanding was we were still at the 4.8, and this was a suggestion from the city manager to bring us down to 3.5. Do we need to...
Well, I think that, oh, do we need to... This is our, this is our current...
Right.
...proposal, which is three and a half.
What will happen is that based on the percentage of the property tax levy adopted by city council, whatever that is, that will adjust the final figure, the dollar amount, as to what is actually, becomes the adopted city budget, so...
Which we'll be voting on next.
Correct. So, Dan, do you have any other comments? Just to clarify.
Yeah, just to clarify, we were at 4.8 was the reading last week, and Mr. Bennett has submitted a 3.5%. And again, the rate where we talked about last week, that's a total tax certification. With 1.8 of that, if you recall, is actually coming from the state for the personal property tax replacement. So that leaves the difference, or 1.7 is what would be levied to our taxpayers.
Correct.
1.8 state, 1.7 local taxpayers, equaling the 3.5. And to arrive at that, Mr. Bennett and I reduced what was the 1% increase, which represent $162,000 of reductions, and removed three other items that were looked at by council as new items. The public information officer, a sick leave, retirement accrual bank, and mobile data computers in the fire department.
Okay.
The total amount of that amounts to about $210,000 reduction in the total property tax levy that would be raised at a 3.5% level.
Is everybody clear on that?
We're at 3.5 then.
That's what's being proposed. Well, this is the latest update.
Yeah, I understand.
Pro tell.
I just want to say this proposal looks a little bit better than the 4.8%. I'm glad to see that the streets were given a higher priority and put in the first two columns. At the same time, I still feel that three and a half is too high. And I feel that it's unfortunate that we weren't given a chance to look at contingency plans. If we had, you know, also if we had just shut down the, at least one of the districts, the urban renewal districts, we could have paid for some of these streets in the first two columns, and then I could maybe support a higher increase on some of these other items. But as it stands now, I can't support a 3.5% increase.
Okay. Keeping in mind that 3.5% that's being proposed actually consists of 1.7 for the property taxpayers, so 1.7 because 1.8's coming from the state. You know, we can look down the list here where they, Mr. Marsh, Mr. Bennett went back through and actually pulled another 1% out. Basically, 1.6, well, 1% is about 1.68?
1.62.
1.62. So basically, 1% has already been pulled out through efficiencies there. I personally, I mean, there's a couple of other things here, and I know I'm probably not going to make Jamie happy, but personally, at this time, I think where we're at in the budget year going forward, we're going to be looking at a new attorney here soon. I don't know that I can support a new deputy city attorney, to be honest with you. And that 43,000, I think is, I think that's a light number. By the time it's all said and done, I think that actually would be a bigger impact, but I could be wrong.
There's 6,600 in the present budget that will be added on to that. That's been used for a contract. Attorney's.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I noticed on one of the previous iterations of this spreadsheet, the city deputy attorney position was at 44,000. This one's 43,000. Is this the most accurate number?
It was just a rounding mechanism to, just for clarity, to focus the attention on the property tax issue. It's a thousand dollars is mostly a rounding issue. But that is only for a part-year position, because it would be hired probably when... I'm not sure exactly when we had in mind actually hiring that position. It was the same with the public information officer. That might be, have been introduced at partway into the budget year in order to, you know, realize some cost savings, and did some additional cost savings. So the same could be said of the city attorney position. Depending on when it was instituted, it could also result in some cost savings if it wasn't, say, started until January 1 or something like that.
Does that...
Go ahead.
Does that include benefits and insurance, or is that just a contract position?
It's not a contract position, no. It's a regular city employee position. I, my understanding is that it's a, that's the total cost of the position. That's just salary? Okay, so that's just salary, so...
That's the, that's the going salary for an entry-level position. It's actually a little less than what the county pays. So, and it, obviously, as Mr. Bennett pointed out, if the budget passes, you don't hire somebody August 1st. It takes a while to do that. So there are some savings that are made just because of the amount of time it takes to hire somebody, but...
Correct. Mr. Mayor. Yes, Counselor Daniel.
So approximately, what is the total cost of that position for a full-year salary plus benefits?
The fringe has got to be another 40%, 38%?
I think you could safely add 30% when you figure in retirement and... Which is the most significant additional benefit cost.
Well, that's why, to be honest with you, that's why I'm a little averse at this time to include this in the 2015 budget, because we are going to be going through a change and, you know, we have a new set of, you know, nothing against the request that's been made by our city attorney, but... Well, let's see, let's, Counselor Meldon, I'll just start there.
Sorry, guys. I have a question on who would be doing the hiring for this deputy attorney? Would it be you? Would Jamie have any... Okay, so that, I think, should play a factor if we are going through, you know, hiring a new attorney soon. I think we might want to hold out just so that the new attorney that we do, city attorney, could, you know, get along with this deputy attorney.
Okay, Counselor Blakely.
I actually want to follow up a little more on Counselor Johnson's question here a little bit. So in the, one of the original proposals, we had two positions that we were looking to hire, information officer and a city attorney. In both cases, we had really just advertised, or we had budgeted only salary in that case. We hadn't taken into consideration of benefits. Is that common that when we do budgeting, or is this just an oversight, you think, well, in hindsight, we probably should have tacked in the cost of benefits too on top of that?
I think it's based on the fact that we thought we were going to introduce both of those positions into a partial-year situation. So the cost would have been, the benefit cost would have been included in the amount budgeted, but the position wouldn't have been hired until later on in the year, so I think that's...
Basically, like a three-quarter time?
Right, like a three-quarter time.
Okay.
So, but normally, when any new position is budgeted, of course, the full cost of that is budgeted into it, that's, you know, with all benefits associated with that, so the total cost is reflected. But in this particular case, I believe it was expected that that position wouldn't be hired immediately so that we would recover some of that cost by waiting until January or potentially, you know, even later before we actually hired the positions.
Pro tell.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we strike the deputy city attorney position from ordinance 4612 in the full amount for the benefits and everything.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Okay. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries seven to zero. Any other pencil sharpening we want to talk about this evening? Counselor Daniel.
Where are we at now? Move 3.5, down another 70,000.
If you reduce it by 43,000, that's getting us down almost another, at least, probably we're down to about 3.25 now. Let's just say, conservative-like, 3.25.
So we're at about a 1.45 on the mill levy with the 1.8 from the state?
Yes. That's correct.
Counselor Collins.
Maybe a little bit off-target here, but looking at possible positions. I know a few months ago, we talked about water meters and some of the progression we were making with that with some of the wireless or digital readings that would not have to be done by hand by people anymore, that that would potentially save some positions down the road. Are those things actually coming to fruition, or that's a possibility that we can save some money there down the road to pay for a position as an attorney or as an information officer as those positions are potentially eliminated?
The short answer is yes. The Smart Read program, which is being proposed to be implemented to, you know, over time, replace all of the existing water meters with the radio read, smart read meters. That can be, where all, you know, lots of data can be collected at one time and transmitted to our computers at City Hall with all the utility data. You know, that program is moving forward. So could that result in a reduced dependence on staffing for that? Absolutely. For example, we have two temporary personnel right now that are hired to help with the meter reading. Conceivably, you know, with a program like that in place, you wouldn't need those temporary personnel. So yes, I think down the road, there is a potential savings for that once that program is fully implemented.
Okay, so down the road, do we have a timeline potentially for that?
Well, two years, three years?
I would answer that. It depends on how, well, it depends on the budget itself. It comes out of the water budget, and we have submitted to purchasing the contract for the meters. It has to go out to bid and then come back to council for approval. Once that is done, then it's a decision of whether we use internal staff to change all the existing meters that are out there, which is about approximately 6,000 meters, which could be done, but obviously, it's going to take longer because our current staff has current job duties. Or do we hire a contractor, get it all done at once in a one-year timeframe? So there's variables in that. It could be done in as short as one year or it could take up to five years.
Thank you. I would, and along with that, though, keeping in mind that those positions are paid out of our enterprise funds. That's not the general tax dollars that are covering those wages. So it's not like because you save over here, we can take that because we, we're more interdepartmental transfers. So it's not like water budget goes... So it's not like water budget goes down, so we can add it into this thing here. This is the general, this is just the general fund money that we're talking about.
But it would definitely help the water fund in the long run. And the last couple of years, the water fund has suffered a bit as far as revenue and, so, you know, in the long run, that would be a good, a positive change to help make the water operation more efficient and save money.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Blakely.
A point of order here. I did not vote on our, on Mr. Councilman Jan- Daniels, Johnson's amendment. You're quicker than I could, Mike could vote there, and so I did not express a vote either way. So I was counting as a seven-zero, but I actually didn't say anything.
Okay.
So I, I don't know how to amend that, but I need to make, let you know that I did not vote. And not by choice, it just happened.
Okay. Well, would you like to vote now?
I'm asking a point of order. How do we correct my mistake?
Just correct it.
Yeah, just correct it.
Okay. Then I, I.
Did you vote in the affirmative or the negative?
I'll vote in the affirmative.
Okay. Thank you. So we're at seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Ren.
Just bring up something I had a question last time, last meeting, about the library capital fund. And City Manager Bennett brought up the fact that it was going to be split between the city and the library foundation. And didn't know the percentages at the time, and we later on found out that the percentage was going to be like ninety-five percent is going to be foundation and five percent will be a city. So just clarify that gives some information.
For the number that showed up in our capital.
Yeah.
Capital budget.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Meldonado.
I have a question about the forty-three thousand dollars. Can we allocate that to somewhere else in the spreadsheet? Could we split it up and do twenty-one-five to Community Park and twenty-one-five to Streets? Or some sort of proportion like that?
If the council were to decide they wanted to reallocate the monies that they decided not to allocate toward the city attorney position to some other use, you could do that, sure.
Just bring you back from that one-four-five back.
Right, we just put you back where you were.
One-seven.
I guess I'll make a motion then.
What's that?
Can I make a motion then?
You certainly can.
I don't know if it'll be at the pleasure, but twenty-one-five to Community Park and twenty-one-five into Streets.
Okay.
Out of the thirty, or the forty-three that we struck from the deputy city attorney.
Do we have a sec?
Twenty-one-five into Community Park and twenty-one thousand five hundred into Streets. You're welcome.
Reapportioning that money from, that was set aside. So motions have been made. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Mayor. Pro Tem. I have a question about the track hoe that I brought up at the last meeting from Public Works, the eighty thousand dollar used track hoe. Is there any difference? What are the pros and cons between getting a track hoe versus a backhoe? I know it seems like if you have a track hoe, you have to put it on a trailer and cart it around town. But with a backhoe, you could presumably drive a few streets over depending on what the, the work is for. Also, are there any price differences between a backhoe and a track hoe? Could we look into that?
You want to go? I was in the business for fifteen years. Substantial differences. I mean, just starting with horsepower, you know, you can accomplish way more with a track hoe than you can with a rubber tired hoe. They're just, they're limited on their lifting capacities and stuff like that. Certainly, they're more mobile and they have, serve a great purpose. But for heavy digging on some of the bedrock that we've got or big cobbles and stuff that we have downtown, you get a bigger horsepower machine.
And what's the price difference?
Oh, well, it depends on the machine. Really does. New, new rubber tired hoe could be a hundred thousand. You know, a new, a new steel track hoe could cost you, you know, two hundred thousand. Just depends on horsepower rings, the size, what you're looking to accomplish, so.
And what?
It's not apples to apples.
Okay. And what are we currently using now?
Typically, when we are required to use a track hoe, we rent it. And we typically end up spending more than that over several, over a couple of years in rent. We spend more than that eighty thousand.
On the other hand, sort of following along the lines where I think he's going, maintenance is performed by the owner of the rental piece of equipment. So there's, there's a big trade-off there.
There is a resale value down the road though at some point too.
Depends on who's running the machine.
Well, our fleet maintenance department, of course, maintains all of our equipment, whether it's heavy machinery like that or it's police cars, other vehicles. And I would say that they do it as effectively or efficiently as anyone else can. That's how we establish the rates that we charge to each of the individual departments annually to help pay for both the maintenance of those vehicles and that equipment and for the replacement of those vehicles and that equipment. So I think that what Mr. Davies said is that, you know, it makes more sense in the long run for us to buy a piece of equipment, albeit a used piece of equipment, that has a certain amount of life left in it than it does to rent equipment over a period of time. And in general, I think anyone could understand that if you rent something in the short run, it's a smaller outlet. But in the long run, if you own the piece of equipment, it's going to be cheaper down the road.
Pro Tem. Mr. Mayor, I guess I could buy that if it was a brand-new one, but to buy a used one when we could be renting and have the company pay for the maintenance.
Well, I mean, if you, if you break something, you pay for it. If it's, if it's normal servicing and stuff, then.
There's nothing that says that if you rent a piece of equipment from a company that hits new equipment, it's not. I mean, you might get lucky and they might have replaced a piece, but it's, you know, equipment that's been used for, you know, jobs on and off for probably a number of years.
I was referring more to the normal wear and tear. Eventually, it's going to degrade and. Counselor Blakely.
Mr. Davies, could there be a situation where at one o'clock in the morning, we would need a piece of equipment like that and not have it available?
There's always that possibility.
Thank you.
I guess I would conclude with the fact that our staff has done many projects that has required a track hoe and we've always rented it. We've looked at that cost over the time and we feel that it is in the best interest of the city to purchase one, a used one, at this time, to save money in the long term.
Will this be going up for bid?
At that price, yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Mr. Davies, is this something we can hold off on for a year?
Well, I will answer it this way. If we hold off on it, we'll still have to rent equipment when we do projects that require a track hoe. So we'll still do the work. We won't own a piece of equipment. We'll have to rent it. We may exceed forty, I, I can't answer that question because if there are emergencies, we will need a piece of equipment to do the work. We'll do what we need to get done for the job.
Keep, keep in mind that this is, if you're going to buy a piece of equipment like that, this is a good year to do it. I mean, you're already at about a three point two-five percent budget. The net effect of that on the average taxpayer has put you into negative territory. So the average residential house that is the first hundred thousand dollars, you're going to actually see a little reduction in property taxes. So you're not increasing any tax, you know, under this proposal this year. That's a good thing for taxpayers. So if you're going to purchase the equipment, it'd be better to do it this year than in a future year where you don't know what, what the situation's going to be like. Because it can change from year to year.
Yeah, market valuation, certainly.
Counselor Daniel.
Mr. Davies, you just mentioned that the cost of renting it could be about forty thousand dollars. So is it fair to say that we're going to see a slight reduction in the budget then? I mean, so the real cost of this is only forty thousand because we're saving forty thousand from renting?
I can't answer that question because when we look at the averages, what we've done over time for projects, each year is different depending on what we have scheduled for work and what emergencies arise during the year. So will we see a reduction in the budget? It's impossible. But we have a line item at this point in time in our budget for rental equipment. So you would see a reduction in the future for that. But there's also, we're going to see an offset in cost because, or maintenance that we have to have will also increase because we're going to be adding a piece of equipment within that budget line.
So I think the basic, the answer is basically yes. Over time, you're going to see a reduction in cost, probably not in this budget year, but in the next budget year because the rental budget's going to go down. Now, yes, there'll be some cost for the maintenance part of it, but that's what, that's what this whole discussion's about right now. Is that in the long run, when you play all those factors in, maintenance versus rental cost, you're going to come out on the plus side. May not see it in this current budget year, but probably in the second budget year of the two budgets, two-year budget cycle.
Counselor Collins.
It's okay to change the topic slightly. I have a question for Chief Michael Best, if you're okay with that. In the, what, what was proposed to change to this three point five percent was a reduction of twenty-five thousand for mobile data computers for the fire department. Can you tell me what that does or doesn't do for the fire department by taking that out or not including it, I guess? It doesn't matter to me.
The people can hear you better down here, Trez.
And Chief Michael Best and I discussed this before I made that change to the budget that you have in front of you right now.
Yeah. With the twenty-five thousand, what it would do is put us in a situation to be extremely close to whether we could fund three frontline vehicles. Because we need to do them in groups because of trying to be able to have that consistent data. The other concern is then the ongoing licensing of that is not currently built into this budget. And that would be another factor that I would have to try to come and find inside my budget. And so when Manager Bennett and I discussed, we felt that at this time, at this year, that that would be a place where we could find twenty-five thousand dollars to make what the, what the budget is. In the future, it'd be nice. And once again, I come into part of this proposal prior to my arrival as a fire chief, but this would be something we'd probably have to put a little more to if we were going to get the mobile data computers. So we could try to put it into a group and then make sure that we build the, the ongoing maintenance into our budget, which currently is not there, and that's a concern I have.
Pro Tem. Mr. Mayor, while the chief's here, a question.
Yes, sir.
I see on the, this budget, we've got the SBC, SCBA units, the exhaust extractors, and we've also had some discussion about the fire inspection SUV. Of those three, could you rank them in priority?
Rank in the vehicle in priority, or all three of those in priority?
Yes, sir.
The SCBAs are obviously a very high priority because here's, here's the deal. In two thousand seventeen, every bottle that we have will lose its fifteen-year service life. We can no longer fill them by law. So what that means is without replacing those bottles, which were bought on a federal grant over almost fifteen years ago, we will not be able to make interior fire operations at that point in time because we don't have any air bottles. We have purchased some this year out of existing budgetary funds. And actually, in September, you'll see another request where I'm utilizing and moving some funds to purchase a few more. So that obviously is my number one priority because we need to have air bottles so we can continue interior fire operations. Obviously, the exhaust extractors are very important. It's a one-time cost. And we've seen, we've tried five years in a row to apply for federal grants to put those exhaust extractors in. And then that SUV vehicle is extremely important because the vehicles they're currently running have well over a hundred and fifteen thousand miles. And they're seeing the wear and tear and they don't have the necessary place to provide that equipment to storage. But if I was to, if you were to ask me to rank those three, that's where I would have those at, at this point tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, chief. Any other questions for the chief? Okay.
Mr. Mayor. I'd move that we strike the fire inspection SUV from ordinance forty-six twelve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to strike the fire SUV. Discussion.
Discussion, yes. I just want to make a point here.
Yes.
This has no bearing on the property tax levy. This is simply, that item's already been removed from the property tax levy equation. It's been moved into the fleet reserve. So it simply comes out of the reserve and it has no impact whatsoever this year on.
On general?
On, on the general fund.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? That's been moved from the big picture down here, pay-for-fire SUV from fleet reserves, which we have fleet reserves because one of these days we're going to have to buy a new fire engine. It's not going to be thirty-five thousand, it's going to be half a million bucks. So.
Counselor Blakely.
Where do we stand right now? We were at three point five and with the reduction in the attorney's salary, where, Dan, where, where would you say we are?
I think we said about three point two-five.
We're about three point two-five.
Which is essentially one point four-five.
Right, right.
Plus the one point eight.
Might be close, might be more like three point two-seven, you know, something like that. Three point two-three or something like that, yeah.
Somebody's batting average.
Okay. Further discussion. Counselor Daniel.
So I'm curious, Counselor Johnson, are you withdrawing your motion or is it? I still have a question. If it's coming out of reserves, can we say that we, can we make a motion to not have it paid for out of reserves?
Of course.
And would that impact the budget?
No. Well, I mean, it would, it would mean that the money would not be paid out of the reserve fund. It would stay in the fleet reserve fund.
But the money's already there.
The money's there now. This purchase would reduce the amount of the fleet reserve if you didn't purchase the vehicle, and then the reserve would stay at the level that it is right now. But it wouldn't affect any other expenditure or anything like that.
I'll withdraw my motion. Counselor Meldonado.
I have a question on how many of these line items are one-time costs? Do we know? And the total amount from that?
What specifically are you referring to?
Like the exhaust extractors. Those are one-time, so that's a hundred thousand dollars.
The SCBAs are obviously a periodic cost because, you know, they, it's, the purchase is good for a while, a number of years, but at some point, they have to be replaced. So that's something that does have to be replaced over time. I think that's the.
Is that it? Okay.
SCBUs after a couple, three years.
Right. I think those are the only ones that are left in there. The street funds are ongoing. The Community Park is, this is a down payment, if you will, but again, it's subject to annual decision by the council as to whether or not to reappropriate funds for the park in, in following years. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Counselor Collins.
Just a clarification for me. So with, with where we're at right now, say it was a three point two-five, with one point eight coming from the state, one point whatever out of taxes, our forgone taxes number actually will grow with this scenario?
Well, no, we would still have a very small portion coming out of forgone taxes because we're over the three percent. So we're talking probably forty thousand dollars maybe out of forgone.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Forty thousand out of two point, two million.
Mr. Mayor. Back to the issue of the track hoe, I believe that, you know, we can continue to, to rent a track hoe and give the taxpayers a windfall. So I'll move that we strike the track hoe from the budget in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Marsh. The water radio reads, this is also an enterprise fund, displaced water. So again, you would not be saving, you'd save the rate payers, but not tax.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not affecting the general levy, the general fund. It's an enterprise fund item.
I think it would still save the taxpayers' money.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Counselor Daniel.
It just seems like we could get by with renting it for one more year, give a slight, hopefully a slight decrease in the rate, the proposed rate increases that are coming up. So I'll support that.
Counselor Blakely.
I, I'll go on record that we just.
I'll go on record that we just leave it as is. If Mr. Davies says we need it, and I'm hearing Mr. Bennett saying there is a savings down the road by owning, my dad taught me a long time, never lease anything, you know? Be an owner of it. Lease it, you're going to give it back someday, and it's money you never see back. There's a residual value. Hopefully, maintenance does a nice job of maintaining it. There's a pride of ownership. We own that, we own that piece of equipment. I want to know it's available 24/7 if we need it, especially the water main breaks in front of my house. So I'll go on record to say I will not support that.
Well, again, having been in the business, I can see both sides of it. I don't know that the, the amount of times that machine's probably utilized versus the rubber tired hoe. Rubber tired hoe's going to go out 10 times for every time a steel track excavator's going to go out. That's my guess. I could be wrong, but do you have any insight on that, Chris?
I can't answer that specifically, Mayor. It's our recommendation.
Okay. Any thoughts, Counsel Randall?
Well, short-term rent, fine. Long-term, you're better off doing it.
Certainly.
I would say, right now, it'd be fine to just rent it as needed.
Thoughts?
I think this is a similar discussion we had earlier this year with the transfer station. Continue to rent or buy and save money in the long run.
Counsel Daniel.
I agree. I think renting is always a, or buying is always a better idea than renting, but it comes down to how much money you currently have and how much you want to hit the rate payers and taxpayers with. It's not, yes, you should always look long-term, but sometimes you can't always afford it.
Counsel Boyke.
I think we've made a very good stab at this budget, coming down from what we originally thought of 4.8, getting it down to 3.25. I'm not going to ask Mr. Marsh to do the math. Maybe I will. Real quick in your head. What, you got it going? Okay, so what is, what is this, what is this backhoe costing each taxpayer?
10.
25 cents a month?
1% rate increase is about 40,000, so it's a 2% rate increase over the long haul. But on the flip side, we already talked about the savings and what have you, so. The other thing to keep in mind, too, we have two other sewer districts in our community, as we know, and so our capitalized cost is redistributed out to COSD and LOSD. So effectively, they too are going to be able, they will be chipping in, if you will, or participating in paying part of this through our normal cost allocation process. So it brings down the overall cost as well.
Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I'd say it's not always better to buy rather than rent. I mean, in this case, we're talking about buying a used piece of machinery that's going to require maintenance and manpower and labor, et cetera, in order to maintain. It's not like buying a piece of property like the transfer station.
But a new piece would also require the same.
That's true, but a used one is more likely to break down.
Again, depends on who is running the machine. I'm not, you know, I mean, I guess I could, I could go either way on this, people, so I guess, should we, I'm going to call for the question. Or if somebody else has to call for the question, we vote on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I call for the question.
Okay. Counsel Randall's called for the question. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, back to the motion about the 80,000 for the track hoe. Those in favor of eliminating the 80,000, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
You have to show hands. Aye.
Which one you asking for now?
Ayes.
Ayes.
I'm your first vote, what was the?
I was to call the question.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and opposed? Okay, motion fails four to three. So we're back to a 1.45% with the 1.8 from the state bringing us to roughly 3.25. Further discussion. Counsel Daniel.
So, Mr. Bennett, can you restate what the 3.25, what the impact would be on the average?
Yes. Approximately about a $2 annual savings on the first $100,000 of taxable value.
So we're on the negative side.
Yes, we're on the negative side. Now, of course, as I, as I mentioned, that doesn't mean that individual property taxes won't go up or down because the assessed value is really the key factor in determining your tax statement at the end of the year. So depending on what your property is assessed at, that's going to affect your overall tax statement.
Correct.
But at least in this particular case, the city will not be adding to that tax burden through the adoption of the tax levy as you have it set up right now.
Counsel Daniel.
This may, or may not be out of order, but coming up, we have resolution 2014-51 establishing the rates. Now, the rates and the budget are part of this budget, correct? This budget assumes that we pass this resolution, correct?
That dollar amount will be reduced according to the tax certification?
No, the rate increase, the 2014-51.
It's enterprise, that's not the general fund.
No, I understand that, but the general, this, the budget overall includes everything, correct?
But what we're voting on is just the general fund.
Whatever that reduction comes to. We'll figure in, we will make the calculation that's necessary in order to ensure that the certifications that you approve jive with what you have voted on. So the dollar amounts will be correct.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Mr. Mayor. Pro Tem.
I'm still uncomfortable with a 3.25% increase. You know, we're talking about a $2 savings. I mean, if we just went down 2%, which would cover the streets and the SCBA, that would give a $14 windfall back to the taxpayers, just on the $100,000 valuation.
Depending on what the assessed value of the house is. And it's $2 a month, and so you're recommending after the budget session that we had in February, where pretty much everybody was in agreement of finally getting back to supporting the community park, that we're going to bag that?
I'm not recommending bagging anything. I'm asking if we can lower it down from 3.25%. Doesn't necessarily have to mean removing community park, but I'm just saying if we get it down to 2%, it'd be a $14 windfall back to the taxpayers.
Well, if my math is correct, if we got it down to a 2% property tax increase, it would, essentially, you'd be looking at a 0.2% to the citizens because of the 1.8 that's coming in from the state. You know, at a, at a, at a 3.8% and you factor in the 1.8, that's a 2% increase. We're already below that. We're at a 1.45%. I mean, you can cut it up and slice it and dice it however you want. Realistically, what this is with the, 1.8% is what, $280,000, Dan?
290.
290. That's coming in from the state regardless. So at a 3.25, you already have the 290 coming in. That leaves us with 1.45%, which would be $238,000, 239?
Close.
That's pretty good for me, isn't it?
235,000.
Oh, so that was high. Counsel Boyke.
I just want to caution us not to become regressive. I think as a city, we need to move forward, and we have projects that we've identified, the park, the streets. We're putting extra money into our streets. We're funding projects. We're helping the fire department, we're moving some projects along here. So I think I, I choose to live in a progressive city than a regressive city.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Randall.
I also feel that we've got to be careful. We're going to, we might end up having to play ketchup, and ketchup can be very expensive.
That's correct. I mean, I remember years of.
I mean, look at our road situation.
Well, and I remember years of 0% property tax increases where we were actually dipping into reserves, and how long did it take us to build our reserves back up? We're probably still not back to the 2008 level, but getting close, maybe.
Very close. Hopefully, we'll miss audit.
And that was, that was a much different time. I mean, economically, that was a much different time. We're not faced with that situation economically in this town or in this country right now, so. Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the 1.8%. Is that going to be recurring, or is that just a one-time deal?
I think it's new for everyone. We're assuming that it's going to be a reoccurring piece, but the state legislators could always reverse that. It's based on last year's values, and there's already some talk about maybe changing that because it's coming from the state's general fund. But so far, so good. Yeah, so far, we're thinking it will remain as a budget.
It just seems to me like we've got a unique opportunity to put some more money back into the taxpayers' pockets and stimulate the economy. I don't think that that's regressive. I think that that's progressive. It's encouraging the market.
Okay. Commissioner Boyke.
Commissioner.
Or Counsel Boyke.
I got that pay raise I've been looking for. My counterargument would be to, every penny we spend goes back into the economy. Cities, governments, we are, we are one of the largest employers. So every penny that we have, it isn't going, even if it's going into someone's personal pocket in the form of salary, it's still coming back into the economy and being multiplied. Every time we make a purchase, it's, it's a multiplier effect, and so I, I see positives not negatives.
Counsel Daniel.
Well, first I'd like to say is, I, I think we could have probably gotten down maybe a little bit further if we could have had the contingency plans. You know, quite often on this council, since I've been on here, we've been told if, when we get to the third reading, well, if you want to reduce the budget, you better have specifics of what you want to cut. Where's your, where do you want to cut, Counsel Daniel? Where do you want to cut? And Counsel Johnson got, got ahead of it this time. Several weeks ago, he requested a contingency budget of what each budget would look like with, you know, what would, what would we have to take out if we had a 0%, a 1%, or just a 2%. But we didn't want to do that. I, I think that's unfortunate. That would have gave us all the options on the table to pick and choose from, so we could have actually had more specifics. Second of all, I think we could have avoided most of this as well if we would have closed out the URA districts, reset the base. The URA could have still went on to perform their goals, and we could have got that revenue continued into our, our streets as well as a little bit extra as well. That being said, 3.25, I, I know it's a little difficult because, yes, it's, we're, we're saying it's 3.25. It is 3.25. That becomes the new base, but it's also the 1.8 is coming from the state. So what I'm focusing on is the 1.45. And according to Mr. Bennett and Mr. Marsh, the savings for the average person will be about $2 per 100,000, of course, depending on the appraised value. So I will, I'm leaning towards supporting it at this point, but I really would like to get it down a little bit further.
Counsel Boyke.
This is more procedural. I understand, I hear Clinton and I hear RJ, and I, I am supportive, that this is a hard process. We sit up here and we're at the 10,000-foot level looking down, and I talked about this earlier, that maybe as a council, we actually need a, and I don't want to bring up this word because I'll end up being on it because I'm suggesting it, so, a subcommittee, but I'm not offering to be on the subcommittee, not just now. Okay? A subcommittee of three of us who would sit down earlier in the budget season and work with the department heads, work with Jim, work with Dan, and, and I, and I could sit there and say, it may be a train wreck. Again, maybe it's one of these things that a, a new council person says and then realizes that it's a bad idea. But a possible subcommittee that starts to look at this. Now, it's possible it would bog down the process and doesn't make sense, and we need to give the department heads the freedom to present their budget without us, without us getting in there and counting how many pencils and pens that they're buying. I, I don't know, but at times, after having gone through one of these already, there's probably a lot of, a lot of items that we don't have an opportunity to discuss at all that are in there, that we just don't see.
Counsel Daniel.
Okay, this is just a procedural question. I was just curious. Before us right now, we have ordinance 4612, and that's the appropriation ordinance. After that, we'll be 4611, which will actually be coming up with the tax certification of the actual amount that we're going to be appropriating for the one we're currently on. Would it make more sense to do them in reverse, come up with the money, and then decide how to appropriate it versus appropriating money that we haven't even decided we're going to have?
I don't think so because really, the issues that you've all been discussing right now are the appropriations, not really the tax levy. I mean, we're trying to get it down as low as we can go, but really, in order to do that, what you're focusing on is the appropriations. So once you've decided what the appropriations are that you want, then all we have to do is back the number into that. If that's the appropriation level, then we'll, we'll do the tax certification so that it matches that.
Correct. And Mr. Marsh, do you have that number?
I do. Instead of 17 million, I'm telling you, it'd be 16 million, 813,930.
And what?
16, 813,930.
And what percent did that wound up, wind up to be?
The exact same.
3.25, okay.
Or 1.45, as far as this is.
Which is about another 300, roughly 300,000 off of what we were originally proposing, so. Counsel Daniel.
And, you know, I'll add one more thing as my justification for why I'm leaning towards supporting this, but one of, excuse me, Counsel Collins. A huge portion of the increase is going towards streets, and, you know, I think a lot of the credit goes to Counsel Johnson because he, he hammered this during his campaign. He's hammered it since he's been on the council, is we need to increase the funding of the streets, and a big portion of this increase, what is it, close to $300,000 of this increase is going towards streets.
Right.
As well as, you know, I, I recognize we need to get the SCBA units, as well as, I think the exhaust extractors are important, so, for what's, for whatever that's worth.
Counsel Boyke and then Pro Tem.
I would like to make the motion, it's appropriate, that we, that we vote, or we have the motion to accept or approve a 3.25 increase in the budget at this time.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion. Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, first, thank you to Counsel Daniel for that. I, if, I still feel like if we had at least closed just one of the URA districts, then it would have, this decision would be much easier for me because I support a lot that's in here. It's just having to front-load all that money upfront for the streets, you know, that, it bothers me that we couldn't have, came to a more amicable solution by directly appropriating the money, money to the streets. So I could reluctantly support the 3.25, but I'd prefer it to be lower, at least lower than three.
Okay. Further discussion? Counsel Collins.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm going to be supportive of the 3.25. I like the fact that our streets are in there, and, and again, RJ's, has done a great job with, with showing the need for that, and the community park staying involved as well is, is very important to me personally, as, as well as I think the community as a whole. A lot of my questions were about, you know, with some of the cuts that we are making, are they going to affect services that our people are going to notice and regret? And I really, I think with 3.25, I think we're on the right track, that we're all going to hopefully see our services continue at the high level that the city provides. And, you know, starting at 4.8 down to 3.25, that's almost a third or 30% reduction in what we started with. So we have made some cuts. I think, I think everybody's tried hard to find some of those areas where we can. And, you know, starting at 4.8, down to 3.25, that's almost a third or 30% reduction in what we started with. So, we have made some cuts, I think, I think everybody's tried hard to find some of those areas where we can make reductions and move ahead.
And I guess I would second that, in that, I thank staff and Dan and Jim for applying some more due diligence, and really trying to find some savings. You know, there's a bunch of line items in here, 30,000, 18,000, 35,000, but when you add it all up, you know, 162,000, that's a 1%, and that's coming right off the top, too, so. Anyways, Mr. Marsh.
With regard to streets and next year's budget, I think council, we pleased, because of addition of the 290 that we've been addressing internally, the general fund, due to some of the revenues from the state and what have you, we internally moved another $100,000 from what would have been to the general fund to the streets. The street fund is actually at 390,000, which, if you recall, includes the match we need for the FEMA grant, the $2 million FEMA grant. So, we're also setting aside about 150,000 for that. And when you add, in addition to that, the rebate from the URA monies next year, 480, I get 870,000 dollars in new street fund next year.
Okay.
So, it multiplied pretty fast.
Good. Okay, any further discussion? Well, all those in favor of a 3.25%, say aye.
Aye.
Begrudgingly aye.
Thank you, Counsel. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you all.
Okay, now, we need, I need to ask you to repeat that by adopting the ordinance. What you've basically done is, you've agreed to a 3.25% property tax increase, but the formal action that's needed at this point is to adopt ordinance 4612.
Just 46, oh.
So moved.
Okay. The motion is seconded to adopt ordinance 4612 as amended. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, for keeping me in line. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, next up, item C, ordinance 4611, for potential third reading adoption. This is fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification in Nesperse County Commissioners in the amount of...
16 million?
16 million, 813,930 dollars.
There you go.
I'll entertain a motion to approve, or to read ordinance 4611 for the third time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Counselor Daniel.
This still brings up my point I made a few minutes ago. In theory, at this point, the council could decide that they didn't want to vote for this amount, but we've already appropriated the money that we haven't even approved, that we're generating. Now, it's kind of a point I was trying to get at, of why I think one should come before the other. Does that make sense?
Mr. Mayor, I fully understand where you're coming from. I think, because the state requires us to approve appropriations, that's the by-law portion, that then, by Mr. Bennett said, that by the nature of the math, even the L2 tax forms, they ask our budget first for your expenses, and ultimately subtract all your revenues, and ultimately finally arrive at the taxes.
Okay.
So, I see where you're coming from, but that's, I think that's why.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded to read ordinance 4611 for the third time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
A third reading of ordinance 4611 by title only suspending the rules. An ordinance fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2014, and ending September 30, 2015, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes. Providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County, Idaho, in the dollar amount of 16,813,930 dollars. Providing a certified copy of the annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County, Idaho, and adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2014-15 fiscal year, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, ordinance 4611 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 4611.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Next up, resolution 2014-51, this is establishing the rates, fees, and equity buy-in charges for water and wastewater service for fiscal year 2015. Mr. Bennett, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the final piece of the budget puzzle. What this does is, it establishes the rates, fees, and equity buy-in charges for our water and wastewater enterprise funds for the coming year. We've already heard from Public Works Director Davies regarding this, in that what we can anticipate in this budget is that uniformly across the board, whether it's the rate per hundred cubic feet that customers' bills are based upon, or the size of the meter service, or the equity buy-in fee, those fees are all increasing by 5% this year. Likewise, when we go to the wastewater fees that are being proposed, the fees that are charged for wastewater service, which is done somewhat differently, it's based more on usage than it is on the amount of cubic feet, because wastewater is actually a function of water. The increase is projected to be 3%. So, but, Public Works Director Davies is here, he can give you some specific answers, I'm sure, to any of these individual items on here, but an effort was made to ensure that all of those are increased by the correct amount, so that they reflect a uniform amount across the board for both water fees and charges, and wastewater fees and charges.
Okay.
And this is a resolution as opposed to an ordinance.
So, we still have to read, though?
Correct. The first thing would be to read the ordinance.
I'll entertain a motion to read, resolution 2014-51.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Daniel.
Mr. Davies, on page six, the first part, I know in general, this whole document, it shows the increase, but section A, it shows the, it shows a decrease in every category, for single-family, duplex, multifamily, and commercial.
Mayor, council members, that is because on the equity buy-in fees, those are actually based on capital improvements that were happened last year, and then what the capacity is of the plants in future years. So, typically, they'll go up, sometimes they go down, it's just dependent upon what type of improvements we've done in the past year. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, all those in favor of reading resolution 2014-51, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Providing resolution 2014-51 by title only. A resolution establishing rates, fees, and equity buy-in charges for water and wastewater service for fiscal year 2015, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councilors, resolution 2014-51 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2014-51.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Randall.
Got a question on wastewater. For a single, on page five, top of the page, 1A, single residents is being charged 2912 per month, and then you go down to the bottom of the page, and the businesses are being charged per 1,000 cubic feet, 2912 per month. Your home normally goes, does about 700 cubic feet per month. So, they're getting, they're basically getting paid, charged more for cubic foot of sewage than the business. They should be more or less equal, I would think.
Respond to that?
I can tell you, I don't know how these rates were specifically set. This, these, the basic structure was in place prior to my starting here with the city. But, again, it depends upon what single-family you look at. I mean, we have families, we have single-family homes that have one person in it, and if you look at daily consumption of standards across the United States, they typically use somewhere between 100 and 150 gallons of water a day. It just depends on family. So, for a four-family, four-person household, you could be looking at close to 250 gallons a day of water. Some people base their sewer rates based on your winter consumption of water, so they set it based on that rate. We have decided to set a base rate for single-family homes as a flat rate, and we've decided, the city decided at some point to set the commercial rate at 1,000 gallons. It just depends on how...
1,000 cubic feet.
1,000 cubic feet. So, it just depends on how you want to set your rates.
Okay.
There is no, you know, if you want to start looking at standards and what people consume, we can certainly go through that measure, but at this point, I couldn't tell you specifically why the city chose that at that point in time.
Okay. Other questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
Down on page five, item E, rooming houses, first unit, 3546 per month, yet you go up to hotels, and their first unit is 2912 per month. Can't quite see what the difference would be, why they shouldn't be charged the same rate for the first unit. And there are also, their remaining units for a rooming house is higher than the remaining units for hotel motel deal two, so I don't know why they aren't the same.
Mayor, counselor, again, the same reason. I can't specifically tell you why those rates were established by the city prior to me starting here. Those have been in place ever since I've been here. If council would like, we could certainly look at that. It's not going to be something that's going to be solved in the short term, because the reality is, you have an operations and maintenance cost for water and wastewater. And, pick a number, if it's at $4 million, you have to get that money somewhere, from the consumer. So, then you have to decide, what are those rates going to be? And you have to look at your different types of consumers. So, you have single-family, you have duplexes, you have commercial, you have large commercial, small commercial. Those are the people that are going to make that rate up, and make up your $4 million operations and maintenance budget. So, someone's going to have to pay that money, and that would be, require a rate study to do that.
Well, I guess Counselor Randall's comments, though, perhaps that should be done, because to me, that does kind of look a little odd. Maybe they either need to be, the one raised up to match the other, the other one dropped down to match the other, or whatever, or a combination of the two, you average them out and split it.
Average them out.
So, I don't...
I can't specifically, I can certainly do that.
Yeah.
We can do that. I can't tell you, at this point in time, how much that's going to change our income, because I don't, I couldn't tell you how many people are in that category.
Sure.
But, if that was the case, we could do that. I would recommend, though, that if this is a concern of council, that we be directed to do a rate study and look at those issues.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
I'd like to propose an amendment to resolution 2014-51, that a rate study be done after this takes effect.
Okay.
Second.
Everybody understand the motion? No?
Is your amendment that in a rate study be done?
Rate study be done, yes.
That's not really an amendment to the rates that are in here, if you're suggesting that it be done after this goes through. I would simply suggest that you direct the city staff to conduct the rate study afterwards, which is...
As opposed to not including it?
This is not really an amendment to what's in this...
Okay.
Yeah, you can vote on, it's just not an amendment.
Well, then, we'll be voting for directing staff to do a rate study. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that carries seven to zero. Okay, back to resolution 2014-51. Counselor Blakey.
Mr. Davies, two questions. This comes in front of council every year, does it not?
Yes.
Typically, yes. There have been times, I'd have to go back then and look, when we did not do a water or a sewer rate increase. I can't remember when, but in the last several years, yes, we have.
And there's been increases in the last several years?
Yes.
Not always, though.
Not always, but yes.
There has been twice.
We have in the last two years.
And prior councils have not asked the same question that Counselor Randall's asking now?
They have not.
Okay. My other question is, I noticed that a business here, down on page five, number three, "A business or industry in this category may, upon approval of the city, install an effluent meter station to measure the actual effluent discharge." What percentage of our business has done that?
Very few. I couldn't give you, I don't have that number at the top of my head right now, but I could get that information if you'd like it.
Well, having said that, are we, I guess it's an opinion I'm asking, so, careful. Are we leaving money on the table there?
By not requiring it?
By not requiring it.
It's difficult, depending on the type of business that you have, it's difficult to get a meter that will measure sewer outfall, because typically, you're going to have to have a grinder system so that it can be measured through a meter. So, that's typically why we don't do it. If, for example, a good business that you would think that would be subject to something like that would be Blue Ribbon, because typically, most of it is gray water. So, they would be probably a prime candidate to have a meter on their effluent.
But, having, if I was the business owner, and I thought this was a pretty good deal, what I'm being charged right now, I wouldn't probably pursue that. I, because this is the wastewater side, they know how much water they're using by their water, because that's metered. So, we know how much is coming in, so unless there's a whole lot of evaporation somewhere in between, we know how much has got to go back out.
Typically. The reason I say typically is because there's, that's why I, prior, in my prior comment, I made the comment that a lot of cities base their sewer rates based on your water rate, or water consumption during the wintertime. Because typically, during the wintertime, you aren't washing your car, you aren't watering the lawn, you aren't doing things outdoor where the water does not go into the treatment plant. So, typically, they'll look at your winter rate, say, okay, 90% of that is going down, and we have to treat it. And that's what a lot of cities do, even for single-family homes. They'll say, you are using this much water during the wintertime... They'll say, you are using this much water during the wintertime, we're going to use 90% of it, and we have a rate per 100 cubic feet. For example, I could say the same argument for a single-family home. There, I, I'll take my family. Two people live at home. I pay $35 a month. There's probably families out there where you have eight or 10 people living at home. Is it fair? Those are the questions we'll be coming back when we do a rate study, because that's going to be the question. Who, because the bottom line is, you're still going to need to meet that $4 million, I'm using that as a point of reference, a $4 million operations and maintenance budget, and then you still have capital that you have to worry about. But you still have to decide who and how are you going to pay for that operations and maintenance, and those are the kind of questions that will have to be asked and answered.
Thanks, Mr. Davies. Okay, where are we at? I guess I'd accept a motion to approve resolution 2014-51.
Right, a motion has been made and seconded.
Oh, and approval?
Yeah.
Okay. So, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, again. All right, next up, vouchers payable to Albertson's, August 1st through August 14th, in the amount of $54.99. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertson's with Councilor Daniel abstaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero, with Councilor Daniel abstaining. I will turn this over to Pro Tem Johnson.
Next on the agenda is vouchers payable for early bird supply, August 1st, 2014, through August 14th, 2014, in the amount of $1,123.81. I'll entertain a motion to approve the vouchers payable for early bird supply.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero with Mayor Kleberg abstaining.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, vouchers payable to Pathologist Regional Laboratory, August 1st through August 14th, 2014, in the amount of $71.60. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero to one with Pro Tem Johnson abstaining. Okay, that concludes our regular meeting agenda. Onto unfinished and new business, city councilor comments. Do we have any city councilor comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Randall?
I think Councilor Blakely brought up a good point as far as the process of working on the budget and having a subcommittee. It might help Jim and Dan and the rest of the department heads if we could get a small subcommittee of the councilors to talk with them and banner around the prices on things and what things were agreeable to. One of the, one of the areas, well, two areas, actually, we need to really take a long look at, a lot of places are having problems with, and that's wages and benefits, particularly medical. Retirement's a little bit out of our hands. That's pretty much set by the state. Not much we can do about that, but we can make adjustments on wages and medical. And after reading some information on the internet about medical, I think we're living in an house in wonderland as far as what we're providing here, and I think we need to take a long, hard look at what we're going to do with the medical in order to keep our budgets within reason for the taxpayer, and that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Want to report on the mud, the mud derby?
Mud run went well.
Cooperation between City Parks and Rec and a lot of other people. We had about 500 people participating and a lot of people watching this weekend up at Community Park, and as was mentioned earlier, a lot more people are up there, and excited about getting more people dirty.
Okay. Now, pictures in the paper, I'm sure didn't do it total justice, so...
Do we need a track row now to fill the holes?
Councilor Blakely?
We have our URA meeting tomorrow at 5:30. Encourage all citizens who are still awake and watching this show to be there. It'll be at the city hall in the back, and again, it's always good information and a good meeting to attend.
Thank you. Anybody else? I've got a couple of comments. I'd like to thank everybody that took the time to come down here last couple of meetings and paid attention through the budget process, along with the councilors. You know, we had, I think we had a real good debate tonight, good points being made on all sides, I think, I think we showed that you can start out big and you can whittle it down. Of course, it doesn't work in the reverse, and I think that was one of the reasons why we set that bar up, you know, at the 4.8%. I don't think anybody at this table envisioned that we were going to actually have a 4.8% increase, but that being said, it allowed us to make some adjustments. I think staff did a really nice job on whittling out some things, and then those of us here further taking a look at budget items and things like that, so I do appreciate everybody's input and participation in that, in the process. It's, again, we start in February, here we are in August, you know, about a seven-month process, so it's, and it's always ongoing. The other personal comment, I'd like to thank the council for their indulgence in allowing me to be absent last week. It was my birthday, something I can't change. 29 years in a row of being on the Salmon River, and just some things I, second reading always interferes with that, but I do appreciate you gentlemen running with it in my absence, and thanks again. Mr. Bennett? Any comments this evening?
No, I don't, not this evening.
Thanks. Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments, do we have any this evening? Councilor Maldonado?
I have received a application from Jan Johnson for the library board, and I would like to propose her nomination.
We have a nomination for Jan Johnson to the library board? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, appointment stands. Thank you. Work session, agenda topics, do we have any new ones for this next month? I know, what do we have on September?
Community Parks.
Which is the 15th, by the way.
The 15th, and the main focus of that meeting is going to be Community Park.
Community Park.
We have a couple of other items that are on there, but that's going to be the main focus.
Any others? Okay, that kind of concludes the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, RE Personnel and Litigation under Idaho Code Section 67-2345, 1A and F.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We'll take a brief recess. We will not be making any decisions after the executive session.